Okay. It is nine o'clock, time to conduct the business of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Today, the first day of June. Now, we'd like to ask everyone to please silence your cell phones. Either cut them off or put them on vibrate. Our invocation today is by Commissioner Antonio Williams.
Power heads, please. Lord God, we thank you, Lord, for having us all here today, Lord. We thank you just for allowing us to come back safely from the Memorial Day holiday, Lord, Father. We ask that you bless everyone that's in here, Lord God, the families that are here to honor their family members, Lord God, and the rest of the county. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge, Commissioner Chris Gurley.
Place flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started on our approval of the minutes, to holiday what we just observed over the weekend or yesterday, just remember all of the families that has lost loved ones, that has given us the right and the freedom to honor that flag. They made the ultimate sacrifice in, you know, for a couple of hundred years and just keep those families in your prayers and thoughts because their family members made a big sacrifice for us to have the freedom that we have today. Okay. Do I have approval of the May 18th meeting?
So moved.
I have motion on the floor to accept the minutes of the May 18th meeting. All in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Any adjustments or discussion of the agenda, Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add after consent agenda, new business, and number one, funding agreement for Fremont Elementary. And you should have a copy of that proposed agreement with the school in print.
Okay. Okay. Special presentations?
We need a motion, sir. The agenda is...
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor that we approve the agenda. Any discussion? If none, show a sign of the right hand. Special presentations, Mr. Tannenbaum.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Number one is a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12, a resolution awarding service weapon to Captain Sean Harris. And I'll turn that over to the Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This time, I'd like to ask Captain Sean Harris to come forward, please. I'd also like to recognize that Mr. Harris' family is here and thank him for being here to support him as well. Excuse me. Captain Harris has served faithfully in our Sheriff's Office for many, many years, and we are proud at this time to award him this presentation. Captain Harris will be coming back to help us as a part-time investigator with some of our special assignments, and we thank him for that. At this time, I'd like to present a plaque on behalf of Wayne County Government, presented to Captain Sean Harris, Sheriff's Office, in appreciation of 24 years of dedicated service as a county employee, July 14, 1997, June 1, 2021, the County of Wayne, North Carolina. Congratulations, sir. And actually, Captain Harris was a part-time employee, so the years are actually a little longer for the presentation I'm fixing to present to him. This is the weapon that Captain Harris carried for many years in the protection of the Wayne County citizens. Captain Sean Keith Harris, from 1992 to 2021, for meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism that you have demonstrated during your career. Your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten. Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Chairman, if you could get approval of the resolution for that presentation, please, sir? I have a motion. We approve the resolution for Mr. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Did you want to read it, or? I'd be glad to, if you'd like for me to, please. Whereas Captain Sean Harris is retiring from the Wayne County of Wayne effective June 1, 2021, and whereas Sean Harris has been an employee of Wayne County Sheriff's Office and is retiring as a captain after a rewarding career, and whereas Sean Harris has served 23 years with the Sheriff's Office in Wayne County, whereas throughout his years, he earned the admiration, respect, and friendship of those with whom he had worked and came into contact. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 20187.2, hereby awards retired Captain Sean Harris and his service weapon in exchange for consideration of $1 and awards him his badge. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioner extends best wishes for many years of good health and happiness to Sean Harris during his retirement and his future endeavors. Thank you. Congratulations, sir.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. We've had, I've had a chance to work with everyone in here, I believe, even the new county commissioners, and it's been a great ride. I just want to say thank you to everyone, my family, and the people that I work with. It's an honor and a pleasure to work for the county. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
To read the res... I thought we had talked about it, but I'm not certain. The next resolution for former Mayor Andy Evans?
I think it'd be approved for Commissioner Barbara A. Cock.
Okay. Are you, are you fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. We have the formal one that can be given to them afterwards, if you'd like. You can actually hand that to him if you'd like.
Next on our agenda, and the special presentations, is a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-14, a resolution requesting naming the North Carolina 222 I-795 Bridge in honor of Mayor Andy Evans.
Welcome, Andy. Family, I'm glad to see everybody. It's a shame, under these circumstances, because I got to know Andy when I was working at Fremont and how much of help he was to me always. If I needed any advice, I could always reach out to him, and I can't tell you how many times I did reach out to him. So I would like to read this resolution, and thank you, Rachel, for getting this done. And this is Resolution 2021-14, resolution requesting naming the NC 222 I-795 Bridge in honor of Mayor Andy Evans. Whereas pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 136-18, Paragraph 8, the North Carolina Board of Transportation may name roads, bridges, or ferries. Whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners desires to honor the former mayor, former and dedicated public servant Floyd Anthony Andy Evans. And whereas Andy Evans graduated from Charles B. A. Cock High School in 1970 and from Wayne Community College in 1972. And whereas Andy Evans was married to his wife Nancy for 38 years, and they had two children, Rachel and Courtney. And whereas Andy Evans' greatest passion was stewardship and conservation of the land and his agriculture community of Wayne County. And whereas Andy Evans was devoted friend and advocate for Wayne, people of Wayne County, serving the numerous boards and civic organizations with the aim of buttering the community and improving the opportunities of his fellow man. And whereas Andy Evans served the town of Fremont faithfully as alderman for 12 years and then as mayor for eight years. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners understand the North Carolina Board of Transportation criteria to have road, bridge, ferries named in honor of an individual, that individual must be living or be deceased for a year or longer. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby request North Carolina Board of Transportation name the 222 Interstate 795 Bridge in honor of Andy Evans, adopted June 1, 2021, George Wayne A. Cock, Junior Chairman and Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
I make a motion that we approve. We adopt the Resolution 2021-14, requesting naming of the bridge in honor of Mayor Andy Evans.
I have a motion on the floor. Any Commissioners have any comments? I would like to say just a word or two. You knew Andy quite well. He, he and his family, his brother tended my mom's land for many years. I never had the first issue with Andy, and he was good to my mom. He, he did things that, farming her land, that really, he didn't have to do. I mean, there was old buildings, he'd tear them down, and no expense to her. He was, he was, he was a dear friend. We had differences of opinion sometimes, but that's, that's what democracy is all about. But I think this is very fitting for the bridge to be named after him. And could not be in a better location because the family pretty much owns the property around it. And I just think it's in perfect, ideal spot. And thank you, family, for being here today. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present this to the family.
That would be fine. Welcome, Mr. A. Cock, who's presenting this. We do have a motion on the floor. Let's go ahead and vote on it. All in favor of the resolution? Show a sign of the right hand. Count Barbara, she, she's good. She's good. Does anyone from the family have any remorse that they'd like to make? I know it's tough, but we're good.
I'm Rachel Evans. I'm Andy's daughter, and I want to say thank you to each and every one of the Commissioners for being in support of this bridge naming in honor of my dad. It's serendipitous that we meet today on June 1st to do this because the month of June was my daddy's favorite time of year, so when the days were getting longer and the wheat was almost ready to be picked, and the tobacco was getting stronger in the field, and he just loved it. He absolutely loved it. My dad loved his life work of farming, but he also deeply cared for the people of his hometown of Fremont and of Wayne County. He strove to improve the lives of those around him, and he just had this gift of being able to meet people where they were at and to lend a hand of help. He never underestimated the power of kindness and the difference it can make in a person's life, no matter how great or how small. He just loved watching the construction of I-795, even though it made his life very difficult because it went right through the middle of the farm and the farm operation. My sister mentioned to me recently that, you know, she always thinks about this, and she remembers to be positive because, you know, the development for the greater good is okay sometimes, even if it's not what you want or what you would have wished for. And this reminds me of a speech he made to the town of Fremont where he said, "Daffodils are the symbol of our lives, our town, and our people. Hardy, eager, know the consequences, but still come out every year and try. That's what I want you to remember. Be like our daffodils and keep trying." And that's what we all have to do now in his absence, to keep trying, to strive to do good, good works and help our fellow man. So thank you so, so much. My family is so honored and so grateful for this opportunity to name this bridge in honor of my dad.
Thank you.
You too.
And again, thank y'all for coming.
Mr. Chairman, since we do have 10 minutes before the public hearing is supposed to begin at 9:30, do you want to go ahead and do the consent agenda?
We still got one more motion. Number three.
Oh, jumping ahead, I apologize. Under special presentation number three, motion to adopt Resolution 2021-15, a resolution in support of House Bill 921, and a copy of that is in your agenda packet.
I make a motion that we, we adopt the Resolution 2021-15, a resolution in support of HB 921.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Anyone? If no discussion, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. All opposed? Did you get that count, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, Mr. Tannenbaum?
If you'd like, and I apologize for that, we can do a appointment committee, since we do have to wait until 9:30 for the public hearing.
Okay, the formal committee is ready. Mr. Gurley?
Okay, the appointment committee met this morning, and we had matters that were tabled from the May 18th meeting and waiting on some confirmation on those. We've decided to continue to table those. We have a reappointment of Melanie Emerson Sanders to the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board, and that's in form of a motion.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? This is a motion from the Appointments Committee. All in favor, show a sign of the right hand.
We also have an appointment to replace Captain Jonathan Griffin with Detective Sergeant Scott Peele to the Community Child Fatality Prevention Team. That's in form of a motion.
That's in form of a motion for the committee. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand.
Also, on discussion items, we brought up last meeting, the Housing Appeals Board. I need, the Appointments Committee needs the designee from each Commissioner sometime by the middle of next week so we can get it on the agenda. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. Mr. Tannenbaum?
We'll then get to our consent agenda, and our consent agenda was gone over during our pre-agenda meeting today, and if there are any questions, we'll be glad to answer them, but if not, we present this through consideration for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion on the floor that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If none, I'll show, if all, show a sign of the right hand. Okay. We've record time today. We're not there yet.
If you, do you feel like we have time for the new business, or do you want adjourned? Or what do you?
I mean, you got time, it's good. I don't think we got time for the new business. All right. It's going to take a few minutes. So at 9:30, we have the public hearing. We can take a...
Recede.
Recede.
Yes, sir.
Until 9:30. It is 9:30. We are back in session. We have a public hearing scheduled for 9:30 to receive public comment from the public on the purpose of the budget for the Wayne County for the federal year beginning July 1, 2021, which was presented to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners on May 18, 2021. A copy of the proposed budget has been filed for public inspection in the office of the Clerk of the Board and also on the Wayne County website. It is 9:30, time to conduct the public hearing, and individuals are limited to three minutes each. Mr. Tannenbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see. Okay, I got it. Okay. Are you driving or I'm driving?
Well, I'm going to get in.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of you. This is a presentation really of changes that we worked on at our budget workshop with the Board of Commissioners last week. Again, we had a six-and-a-half-hour meeting last week. I appreciate the board's commitment, time, and input to that discussion. I think we got a lot of good things resolved, and hopefully this will better reflect what you would like to see within the final budget as well. So let's go just to the, to the crux of it, the changes. Originally, under the manager's recommended budget, it was recommended that we would have a 5.4 cent tax increase. And if you remember, that was to all go for capital projects. We are looking at going at $58 million worth of new debt for Wayne County. $5 million for Fremont Elementary, $3 million for Wayne Community College for their advanced manufacturing center, $25 million for a new detention center, and $25 million for a new combined Health and DSS. Again, we were looking at setting aside at that time 5.4 cents just for debt service. Again, none of the increase is for operations. It is strictly would be for debt service. But in working with the board, we looked at making some cuts and some revenue adjustments so we would not have to have a 5.4 cent tax increase. It would only be a 4.4 cent tax increase. And again, that would put us to 70.75 cents per 100 evaluation. So that's $70.75 for every $100,000 for a home on an annual basis. Again, here's some things that we did change as far as cuts. Wings Over Wayne, again, was delayed this year. We looked at facilities uniform reduction. We believe we added too much in that to begin with. Mount Olive Airport Reduction in Allocation. What we originally put in there was their request, not what was recommended, which was, I believe, 25,000, 35,000? 38,000, thank you. Again, credit card fees will be cut as we are changing vendors. We did cut out a vehicle that was accidentally put in there for 911. Message boards for OES. We looked at working with our EMS department for overtime reduction. Soil and water vehicle, we also had, was listed twice, and also we had a soil and water duplicate dollars in there for certifications. So those have been cut. But we also looked at increasing revenue in our health department and jail. We took a very conservative approach and also working with our health director, Dr. Weiss, there's going to be some increased revenue due to COVID. So some of the revenue and the shots that were given out, there will be some continued revenue that we should get moving forward, and we have included that in the budget. So the cuts and the cuts in the new revenue, that allowed us to lower the tax rate that was originally recommended by a penny, but also lowered our fund balance usage as well. Again, this is kind of the $64,000 question. What will the city of Goldsboro do with respect to sewer? What we are saying right now is that we will make a final adjustment once the city approves their budget. And right now, it's my understanding that the city manager is recommending a 15% increase. We will mirror whatever they do, but I'm not sure what they will do until after their public hearing, but this will give us the flexibility and make us aware that we will adjust it as quickly as possible to mirror what the city will do. There's any questions on that?
They just had an increase, and now they're looking at another increase.
That a 24% last year, if I'm not mistaken, and they're looking at a, another, I think the manager's recommended was a 15% increase this year. And again, we would have to, since we are, they are responsible for our sewer and treating our sewer, they pass out that same increase along to us, and we would have to pass it on to our customers as well. Again, total changes to the manager's recommended budget. Revenues is 934,000 to the increase. Expenditures, we reduced 260,000. So it was $1,194,925 as far as the change to the budget. Again, one penny equals $880,000. Again, tax increase for debt service, we will, it'll increase by 4.4 cent. That'll bring in $3,488,000 on our property tax and $436,000 on our personal property, which is basically our vehicle tax. And again, the total tax increase, the total revenue increase, again, allocated certainly and specifically for debt service will be $3.9 million.
Even with this tax increase, that stills put us at one of the lowest in the...
In the region, yes, sir. We are still lower than our surrounding counties, yes, sir. I think the next lowest is 71. If somebody has that. I think it's... sir. I think the next lowest is seventy-one. If somebody has that. I think it's Duco. I can't recall. Yeah. But, but for Stryden County, we'd still be the lowest, yes, sir.
The next lowest is Wilson.
Wilson, okay.
It didn't do one.
Okay.
The highest is Lenore. They are the 12th highest in the state. Mr. Girl, would you read out those?
Yeah, I'll fix it to when I get through. What's he doing, most of what I was gonna talk about?
Oh, sorry.
No, but it's your job.
All right. Whoop. Wait a minute. I think I went too fast. That's what I meant. Whoops. We'll get back. Oh, crap.
Who's driving this?
Carol is.
Drive this already.
From the, wait a minute. All right. All right, let me see. All right. Oh, that was it. Okay. Good. Any questions that the Board may have about the changes that we've made?
Nothing. But can, Allison, can you pull that screen back up on our screen? She was, everybody was trying to navigate at the same time. Thank you.
And they, let me see if I can get it to where. Yeah, I'm just saying that.
No.
Give me just a second. Carol, can you pull up from your email over there if I send you the attachment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's pulling up on their monitors, but not this, because there's two different computers, so. It should be a PDF document.
Yes, ma'am. Binder one.
Uh huh, that's it.
Apologies. It'll take me just a minute to get it to where. Pull it up for you guys.
Ignorance is great when it's working.
And page three is specifically what they were looking for. That's the surrounding counties' tax rate. So this was actually from Mr. Honeycutt's presentation when he did the manager's recommended budget.
You said ours would be what now? Would you say the seven oh seven five?
Mr. Chairman, what year did we reduce the tax? Was it four years ago?
There was a gradual reduction.
Do my thing first. We reduced it twice, didn't we?
Yep. There's been a gradual reduction. I think in the last 10 years, the taxes have decreased approximately 10 cents.
It's 10.05. You want me to do my stuff?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Don't need to stay up here at work. I'm gonna do my, I'll do mine at the end. You, you're growing. There's, the actual property tax rate at 2010 was 76,400. 2010, 2011. 2011, at the revaluation, it dropped 0615 cent, which is on your screen, which makes it 70, or 7025 is what it dropped to. 2013, it dropped almost three and a, little over three and a half cent. 2015, it dropped, I'll say 1,500, but I mean, I guess, depending on how you want to look at it. It dropped basically 0.015. In 15 and 16, it dropped 0.015. Now, if you'll look at the, at the screen in front of you, do you want me to get up and do this, or you want me to sit right here? Does it matter? But if you look at the screen in 2014, 15 to 2015, 16, it looks like we dropped a billion dollars in revenue. But that's actually, if I'm not mistaken, that's when DMV started collecting the property tax on vehicles. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It's a billion dollars in valuation.
Exactly, exactly. That's where it drops, right in there. So that's, that, that number's a little skewed, that 47. But so basically, the, the last two boards, it dropped just less than four cent. The total, the total drop, like I said while ago, was 10.0, 10.05 cent drop since 2011, which is basically saved an average homeowner $130 a year if it was a straight 10 cent drop. If you look at the far right corner, that savings has saved property tax owners somewhere close to 74 and a half million dollars. That's what it's, that's what it saved the, the property owners. Fund balance in 2010, 2011 is 49,333,980. Today, it's 36,681,130. The, the projects, the next screen, the projects that have been, been accomplished basically about the last two boards, and you can see it on the thing, the detention center being the, the, the most, which was $10 million, if I'm not mistaken. That was basically paid with cash, correct?
Yes.
Correct. And then you've got maximum upgrade stuff on the Maxwell, or overage on the Maxwell Center, four million. This is far as what county, come out of county fund balance. Gratham Middle School, 6.9 million.
That was Gratham and Spring Creek.
Gratham and Spring Creek. Nine one one was four million. School renovations, 6.1, and I think that goes back to the Southern Wayne Gym and some other things, correct?
Goldsboro High School, Eastern Wayne. There were several in there.
Then you got the Mid Lane Classrooms, 1.4 million. The Advanced Manufacturing, three and a half million. New EMS substation, a million and a half. Corporate area expansion, water line at airport is almost 600,000. EMS substation additional cost is another 600. Maxwell Center final change orders, which 250, whatever that would be. The Dixie Trail purchase, Dixie Trail building was 200,000, but that's, that's a little skewed because we come up with somewhere at about six, how much was that, 600 some, I think?
Yes.
Yes. And I, too, this was done from Davenport's presentation a couple of weeks ago. The one beforehand, and there's so much stuff that has been accomplished over the last several, I'd say, eight, eight years or so, that they had to condense some of it. Some other projects were the voting equipment, the communication towers, finance software, additional equipment at nine one center being, I think some of that was IT and different things. We had a DSS design for Dixie Trail, was about 320,000, which we're not going to that situation anymore, so. And the reason I'm saying this is, is when, when I got on the Board, communication is an issue with the county. Communication's an issue to the citizens of the county, because whether you watch or read the Goldsboro News August, or Goldsboro Daily News, or the New Old North, or WRAL for that matter, I mean, you know, unless you, you're involved every day, you're gonna miss something. And more people watch our meetings than what we realize. So that's the reason I wanted to kind of do this first. That's the reason I asked staff to, to get these numbers together. Some other pro, some projects that we're actually looking at doing is the Max Security Jail. I'll say Max Security. Replacing the, our jail that we have now with, with some issues that we have. The health and DSS facility, building those in, in properties that we can expand down the road so we're not landlocked. We have the Fremont School expenditure, or Northern Elementary School, whatever you want to call it. The Wayne Community Site, which is the advanced, or Center of Industrial Technology and Engineering, the advanced manufacturing, they've changed the name. But as Craig just said, well, that's somewhere around $58 million. Now, this is Chris talking, not the Board. I think it's gonna be more like 70 to 75 million, just because of cost and the timeframe that we had these figures give to us. We don't have actually concrete figures per se. Yeah, we still have. We, we, we have to look after our employees. Right now, we have a pay study with the Sheriff Department Detention Center that the sheriff paid for out of his budget. You know, we've got to look at trying to give raises to all our departments that are below average for surrounding counties. But I've always said, a business is no better than its employees. Well, the county's no better than its staff, and we want the best of the best. Now, we, Craig projected, excuse me, County Manager projected, or proposed a 0.054 tax increase. We tried to whittle it down to 0.044, which is a cent, which is basically 880,000, as he just disclosed. The, but we're kind of taking it out of operations. Now, the other thing I didn't realize before I came on the Board, and that's the reason I'm doing this. The county is responsible for a lot of stuff. We can't depend on the state for every single thing. Case in point, the SROs. SROs have them in every school. They're almost. Dr. Lewis said the school system applies for a grant every two years for the SROs. Do I think the state's gonna do away with it? No. But we're still responsible for paying out of fund balance, I think it was a half a million, half a million plus dollars, that we're responsible for paying out of county tax dollars for SROs. Because, and also the school nurses, school nurse program. Dr. Weiss gets a grant or payment from the state for a portion of that, but we have to pay out of county budget. I think it was 250. Does that sound right? So 250,000. So just in that one line item is a penny, round figures. So we need to realize that, you know, I don't like to pay taxes than anybody else. You know, that one cent, it's gonna cost somebody on a $130,000 house 13 dollars a year. A $500,000 house, 50,000, 50 dollars a year. Now, we all live beyond our means, as my grandma used to say, but if you can afford a half a million dollar house, you can afford 50 dollars more a year. The, the, the sales tax has been tried three times to get passed. Two in the last. Huh?
Three years.
Three years. One time, it was way back, probably 2010, 11, 12. I can't remember Larry, but I know the Farm Association was dragged into it. But what people don't realize is that quarter cent will bring in, depending on your, your sales, will bring in 2.4 to 2.6 million dollars a year. That's a quarter cent for everybody. Everybody pays it. I'm talking people coming from Raleigh, from Greensboro, going to the beach. When they stop in Goldsboro, they're paying it. And they're really not getting any benefit of it except getting some gas and, and drinks or groceries or whatever. But we're, we're benefiting from it. But the reality is, is we're in the service business. That's the only thing that we provide, is service. And without the revenue, we can't provide the service. And the reality, at the quarter cent sales tax not passing, is we got a property tax increase. Now, I'm the last, like I said, I said on day one that I wouldn't raise property taxes. And get back to what my grandma said, be careful what you say, because, you know, we're sitting in this position up here as county commissioners, that we've got to make the best financial decision for the future of Wayne County. Go to that third slide, please. As you see on the, on the, the Board, the surrounding counties, if we were, if we'd go four, four, like Craig or like County Manager, I said while I go, it'd be 0.7075. If we go to 0.54, it's 7175. We're still lower, almost by a cent and a half than anybody around us. And we don't know what they're doing, I mean, right now. As I said while I go, Lenore is the 12th li, highest in the state, and I'm not sure Sampson ranks, but they're not far behind them. But if you look down at us, which I put on my sheet where it says Wayne is at 6635, that's what we're at today. And as a taxpayer out of pocket, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you because, and, Mr. Combody, I appreciate it, because I don't like to pay taxes better than anybody else. But with the school needs, our facility needs, our employee needs, you know, we've got to have the revenue. Now, as I stated a while ago, depending on what media outlet you look at, whether it be News August, Goldsboro Daily News, New Old North, WRAL, on a weekly basis, they cover some sewer issue. And right here lately, it's been within the confines of Wayne County. Eureka, pile with Mount Olive, Goldsboro, we all have the issue. We've got to think ahead. I spoke, had a little morning meeting, I guess you'd say, yesterday, just in, impromptu meeting, saw somebody, we met and sat down and had a Pepsi and talked. And we've got to look at a regional sewer system. And I say regional, it's gonna be multiple. There is billions of dollars coming down from DC for infrastructure needs. For water and sewer, to the tune of, they've let in that we've got about $18 billion worth in North Carolina. Now, sewer system does several things. Sewer system brings industry, which brings jobs, which brings revenue. And, you know, I think the, the misnomer of a sewer system is, is people think everything's just gonna bloom. But right now, our intersections on the major highways cannot be developed because we have no sewer. We have no infrastructure. Now, 30 years ago, I made a comment to some people in the water industry, in the water, on some of the water boards. I said, "We've got to get into, we've got to get into the sewer business." And their words to me was, "Son, you don't know what you're talking about. You have no idea what it costs." Well, said the same thing not too long ago, and had those people dead and gone now, from 30 years ago, same thing. "You don't know what you're talking about. It's gonna cost, we just, we can't afford it. We cannot afford not to get into the sewer business." The sewer system will save more and preserve more farmland than anything we've ever done. Because right now, the land that perks, as we call it, as we grew up on the farm, the prime tobacco land, or sweet potato land. They'll be developing tracts of woods that probably wouldn't perk any other way, but if we had the sewer system, we would be developing that, and then we would still have rocrop areas to form. So, all that being said, I was gonna, I told them I was gonna, I was gonna get up, they had me a microphone so I could walk around. I'm a, I'm a, I grew up in the Pentecostal faithful Baptist, so I kind of move around a whole lot. But this is something, and I said all that to say this. Property taxes of real property, 40% of us pay 100% of the bills. The next time the sales tax comes through, please trust your elected officials to try and spend it wisely, because the quarter cent sales tax can alleviate property taxes increases in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something too, on regards and follow up with what Commissioner Gurley said also. Our Sewer Committee went out and visited Mount Olive last Thursday. When you go and listen and look and see what the sewer issues are, it is scary. Goldsboro just had a spill. They're, during the rain periods, they're at their max capacities. That's scary, because one of the things that can happen when we have development, businesses want to come to this area, they're not gonna be able to come because we don't have the sewer capacity. I worked in Fremont for seven and a half years, and the issue was continuously sewer, sewer, sewer. And a lot of the terracotta lines are aged out, that is what Mount Olive is going through now, is the terracotta lines, that's what was going on in Fremont and Pikeville. So, these issues are gonna be facing this board, and it's something we have to look at, because it's not gonna get any cheaper as we go down in the years. And we really need to focus on some of these items. We have failing schools, deterioration that we've got to monitor and repair. And like Mr. Gurley said, I don't like to pay taxes either, and this board took a lot of reviews at the ways that we could keep from raising taxes, because we all take it very seriously, because we're taxpayers, just like the audience and our citizens and our constituents. And we looked at so many ways to prevent it, and like Mr. Gurley, when I first came on board, I did not, was not in favor of tax increase also, but once we got into the numbers and seen the needs, it's there. And if we don't, we're gonna have more problems in five years from now. The buildings are just gonna deteriorate that much more. Our DSS, our Health Department, who is very much needed with our citizens who needs this kind of care. I'm on the DSS board. Commissioner Dotter is on the Health Board. We took a tour of the hospital, old hospital, what we call it. The building is in terrible, terrible shape, and it's a shame that the building has got to this point. So a decision has to be made on that. Our jail over here is in terrible shape also. It's a liability waiting to happen, I feel like, in the future if we don't address this issue. So, I'm just speaking on behalf of this board, you know, how serious we took this budget, and hope we can get the support that we need from the citizens, because it was not taken lightly. And like Commissioner Gurley said, all of us don't want to pay taxes, but this is a need here now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Chair, I was, the rates, I visit Lenore County a lot. My son goes to school over there. I actually lived over there for about 10 years. Just recently, I was downtown and, you know, just looking at some of the things they've been doing as far as moving forward. They have a lot of industry, they have a, I mean, they're just, their school system is a lot better than ours, and not to knock our school system, but just speaking as far as terms of ratings. They're investing their money and they're putting it to the right places. They recently built a jail, a new jail over there. And I just think that, you know, at some point, we have to make the tough decisions, and that tough decision comes with raising taxes. We all don't like it, we don't want to put that burden on our citizens, but at some point, either we're gonna do it, or we're gonna be, we're gonna be forced to do it, you know? And I think right now is a, is a time that we have to go ahead and make the hard decision so we can look 20 years down the road and not just look at what's gonna happen next year or the year after. And I think that's been a lot of the decisions that's been made, that with some of the building and some of the funding, we're just looking at a few years down the road and not looking at 10, 20 years down the road. I want, whenever I leave this board, whoever sits in the seat after me to be okay moving forward, and the county to be okay moving forward, and to be in a good position that they don't have to make this tough decision again. Even with the sales tax, I think a lot of people didn't know what the sales tax was for. All you see is sales tax, and you're like, "I don't wanna pay no more money," you know, and not thinking about what it's going into, not telling the community what it's about, what it's gonna stand for, what it's gonna do moving forward. You know, even, I don't know what the sales tax rates are to compare counties, you know? Some of those things are things that we need to put out, where we're doing those things so people can understand, the average person can understand why we're doing it, you know? You know, I had a long talk with my aunt about the sales tax, and, you know, I wasn't in agreement with it until she talked to me, she was like, "No, we need it," you know what I mean? And it changed my vote when I went and voted for the sales tax, because I didn't understand it at first. I'm like, "No, I'm always against it," you know what I'm saying? But she changed my mind, and she was like, "Bev, we have to move forward." And I was like, "You know what? You're correct," you know? Like I said, I'm just in Lenore County a lot, I like the way they're moving, everything. Even I was at their, I went to the high school recently, and they have a new Mondo surface on their track, you know? And it's only like, one of the only surrounding counties that have that. We need that here. You know, we're a larger county, more kids, more athletics, everything, you know? We have to start moving forward and thinking down the road of what we need for our citizens here to better this community. So, as I said, I'm, wasn't an advocate of tax raises or sales tax, but I am at this point, you know? I don't wanna go overboard, but I think that, you know, we still need to do these things so we can get our Health Department, our DSS, our jail, you know? These are things that we have to do, because way too long, we're just gonna be, it's just gonna get worse. It's not gonna get any better, and that's just a fact.
I got one more thing, based on what Beva just reminded me. Excuse me, Commissioner Foster, sorry. People, if you'll sit back and really think about it, you're already paying that quarter cent, and I know this quarter cent don't have anything to do with what we're talking about right now, but you're already paying that quarter cent. You could buy something that's a dollar. I ain't got the first quarter cent back yet, it's always a dollar seven. I mean, if you really think about it, I mean, really, really affects you, it's a great big purchases, but when it's all combined, it adds up to that 2.4, 2.6 million dollars. So, anyway, that's just a little fact, and you can, fact checkers can check me on that one, because I'm pretty sure I'm right on that one.
Anyone else?
No, Mr. Chair. I'm in support of this budget, because I toured the Health Department, and I have to commend some of the staff that have worked there for several years and tolerated it. Also, I toured the jail, and there's a need there, there's a need, and me sitting down with the sheriff, there's something that's gonna be totally different about the new facility, that's gonna be more of a humane scenario for people who are incarcerated. As we know, some people who get incarcerated are innocent, you know? So there's gonna be more programs in place, there's gonna be more humane living conditions, in my opinion, for what will be in the future. To touch bases on the sewer, Mount Olive, that's gonna, that's definitely a need that we definitely have to address for the future of Mount Olive. If we don't, if we don't address it, there won't be any population here in 10, 15 years. So, this working group that we have here, I think that we're, we're gonna be working hard, we're gonna bring back everything to this board, and we're gonna work closely with these county, with the, with the other cities and municipalities in the county in regards to that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll say a few words. Most of, most of what needs to be said has already been said, but, you know, I'm like the other commissioners, I don't like a tax increase any better than anyone, but our needs outweigh our funds. I'd like to commend the last two sets of commissioners. They did a fantastic job on saving money. Both, both of the previous boards did. Both of them lowered taxes. And at the time, I'm quite sure that, I know I was on one of the boards, and we, we did, you know, what we had told the people we would do, and it was probably a mistake. Instead of promising to lower taxes, we should have promised them that we're not gonna raise taxes, because it's come back to bite us. We lowered taxes, and now, whether any of us is sitting on this board, if it was seven different members sitting right here, they'd be faced with the very same problem. We've, the needs are out there. Health Department's been mentioned, the DSS has been mentioned. Our DSS staff right now are scattered in three or four different buildings all over the county. And can you imagine the headache that the director's got trying to, trying to herd that many cats in that many locations? And she does a fantastic job. The Health Department, part of that building is occupied by DSS also. But keep in mind, that, where the Health Department and part of DSS is now, that was designed for a hospital. Part of it is over 100 years old. There's so much wasted space in that building. I would have thought, as a, as a citizen, before I come on this board, that that would have been the ideal place for a Health Department. I was wrong. A Health Department and a hospital is two different things. I mean, the halls in that building are 10 foot wide. Probably a fourth of that building is wasted space, because you don't need 10-foot halls for office complex. You do for a hospital. The jail is the, not the new one on William Street, Kerry Windows Detention Center, but the old one was outdated the days that they opened the doors. As, as we have found out since being on the, on the Board of Commissioners, that building had issues from day one. They had the contractor mind standing is, went bankrupt right in the middle of it, another one had to come in and finish, and it just, it's, it's a mess. And also, the general public doesn't realize, a jail and a prison's two different things. The sheriff has got a jail. Basically, everyone that he's got incarcerated in that jail, they're innocent until proven guilty. A prison is different. A prison, when you go to prison, you will find guilty. Both facilities, whether it's a prison or a jail, the people got to be treated humane. Certainly, there was a reason for them being there, but that, that's, that's, that's not the issue. The issue is, is, is the way that you treat people. Our school system, the previous board, the two previous boards, have been several new schools built in the county, but there's still a need. Our, some of our school buildings are 100 years old. And like has already been said, that our needs have outgrown our funding. I don't like property tax increase, but it is what it is. I'm, I look, I face people every day, that when I ran for this position, that I told them, I said, "I'm not for a tax increase." I'm still not for a tax increase. But if this county's gonna move forward, we don't have a choice. We do not have a choice. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience, this is a public hearing, I mean, anyone in the audience have anything they would like to say? You're limited to... Three, okay.
Commissioner Ed Cromarty, and he's the first on...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. The county commissioners and staff. My first intent was to accompany a good friend of mine up here, and then last night, I thought I'd write a couple of notes just in case. Mr. Chairman, I take value in the fact that you and another commissioner sitting on the board knew that we reduced the taxes. I voted for that, for good reason. One of the things is that I know that what's in my checkbook at my house is what I have to live on. And I know there's a lot of other people who are, and I'm specifically point to the people that's over 60, and I'm gonna get a little personal, I point to those over 70 also. There's a thing called, your checkbook's got a certain amount of money in it. And I used to tell my predecessors, Mr. Evans, that I know how to spend my money at my house as good as anyone else does. But there's one thing that I wanna reference back to, and if I make a mistake, manager, please correct me. The firm that I think you all mentioned was Davenport. Over the years that I spent on the board, Davenport came in and gave us advice about what we could afford based upon that tax rate. Now, I could probably stop right there and tell you that I am not in favor of trying to tell you or suggest to you which of these $58 million projects you need to fund. That's your all vote. But I would suggest to you that you, I implore you to fund the ones that you can afford off of what your current check, textbooks say you have. There was somewhere nine and some million dollars worth of schools, and Maxwell Center, Kerry Windows Site, and several other things. That the debt service, if I understand it, stayed inside of that tax rate that we have. Is that correct?
Paid cash for a lot of that, yes, sir.
Paid cash for some of it, but that was caused, previous boards that saved money were able to do that. But Davenport, still, if I make no mistake, they kept us inside of what we could afford based on that tax rate. But Davenport still, if I make no mistake, they kept us inside of what we could afford based on that tax rate. Because if it hadn't, we'd have had to raise it then. Not trying to tell you to be selective inside which ones you want to fund. The only thing I ask you to do is fund the ones that you can afford out of the current tax rate. And I heard you say, very nice that you say that you don't believe in raising taxes. We lowered the taxes about four cents, and now you're talking about raising them about four cents. Now, there's one thing that I, is not on my notes here, Mr. Gerle, but I'd like to ask you to take a look at this. You talked about a person who may own a house worth, say, he paying taxes on $130,000. The $130,000 house. There might be a group of people in this county who say, well, if you only taxed me on my, on my assets of the first $100,000, I might not argue with that. But there are people in this, in your family's mind, other families, who have saved and invested. And their tax bill does not compare to a $130,000 house, it's more than that. And when you're talking about all the things that take place in an economy, the burden will have to be shifted to someone to pay the extra taxes, all right? No one's going to get by. Someone down the road somewhere is going to pay some extra taxes. And we cannot, I've got my three minutes already.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to close today. I'm sorry. Point is, let's keep it inside of it. Let's stay with the tax rate that we have. And I think we'll all be a little bit.
Happy weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cromarty.
Next, we have Shirley Edwards.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's four issues that bother me. Poor planning. If we didn't just discover in 2021 that we had four buildings or four projects that need to be done. Now, there's ability to do long-term planning, which has not been done evidently. Because otherwise, you would have known that you had those four projects. That's like me saying that I'm going to buy a new house. I'm going to get a house full of new furniture. I'm going to just get me a new car, too. And then I think I'll buy me a new boat. All of them at one time. You don't do stuff like that. If you do, you'll stay at the poorhouse and you'll run everybody else at the poorhouse. That's the problem with me. And the pandemic, you talked about you didn't do anything, Mr. Honeycutt, in your report. Last year with some positions because of the pandemic. The pandemic hasn't gone away this year. The pandemic has affected us right on and still is. The moratorium that went on rent, many of us have not received rent on our property the whole year. Because when you give people an opportunity not to pay, they're not going to pay. The problem was last year. But we had to pay taxes on those houses and properties, even though we didn't get any rent from them. That bothers me. The thing that you're saying, the property tax, we can't get people to agree to the sales tax. Well, that's part of your communication problem, Mr. Fash. You need to do a better job at that. If you were doing a better job, people would hear you and be supportive. Now, I've supported it every time and got out and advocated for it. Some of you board members know I did. But the sales tax you're talking about, we citizens won't agree to a sales tax. But those of us that have property don't have a choice. You're going to make us do that. And you're going, we, you are the same ones sitting up here that I said to you earlier this year or the end of last year. I said, why don't you be kind enough to people that are paying property tax to give them six, first six months with no interest on it? But you weren't willing to do anything for the average citizen like myself. And then when I, some of you was told to reduce your money you were getting from the citizens, you didn't want to do that. But y'all want to do, take from us, but you don't want nothing to take from you. You got a problem on the families.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
And finally, we have Janice Scales.
Hey, everyone. I'll be honest with you, I thought I was signing in because I had to, but since our name is down there on that paper, I'm a self-aware. Enough is enough, y'all. Y'all got to think about the elderly, if y'all don't think about nobody else. They are on a fixed income. I don't care how much y'all, y'all sitting up here praising yourself about, oh, we paying the laws 66 point, whatever tax rate. The other state, we, we the laws and this city is the highest. It don't make no difference. The difference is, they're not changing their pocketbooks. It's not changing their salaries. Y'all need to think about it. When time to vote, y'all out there giving them elderly people votes. When time to vote, y'all, oh, we going to do this one, we going to do that one. These builders have been a problem. They ain't just got a problem, this building's been a problem since I was born. Y'all just didn't do anything about it. You took that money the way y'all want to turn it, and now y'all need the money. It's always taxes, taxes. You get a car, you paying taxes. Then you bring the car home, you still paying taxes. It's always going to be taxes, y'all. But you don't have to think about the elderly. You say you do, but you don't. Because you trying to take blood from a turnip from them people. Be out there when they paying their water bills, their light bills at Pigley Wiggie. See the expressions on their face. See what they be saying when they coming out shaking their head and said, I don't know how I'm going to make it. Y'all, in my property, what I, what I have on King Drive, it went for 200 something when my mother and father was living, Herbert Evil Holloway. To now, I've been staying there, this is my home. It's up, up there over $1,000 taxes. So you keep saying, y'all law this and law that. Think about elders. Because I do, I hear them, I understand them. And y'all ain't doing it. Keep talking, oh, just zero point, 4%. Y'all need to do better than what you're doing because you want to vote. But you ain't doing what you need to be doing for them. Because they, some of them have tears in their eyes. And I'm sick of looking at that. I'm sick of it because y'all need to do better. They ain't making the money y'all making. They're not getting the salary y'all getting. But they still got that problem, and you still trying to take blood from a truck. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. That is?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't sign up. Could I be allowed?
That'd be, I think we got rules we got to go by. You can make comments at the public.
Mr. Chairman, you need to close.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. New business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We'll get to new business. Is it, should we in fact take some action in regards to the budget?
If you so choose.
That's, that's, that's the decision of the board. You know, it's not, it does not have to be acted on today, but that's the, that's the decision that the board needs to make.
Can we have some board discussion and vote on it our next meeting, or does it matter?
Whatever you so choose.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, June 30th.
So is it kind of our understanding that we were going to just wait two weeks? That's, that's what I'm hearing. Do I have to inform them, do I need a motion on that, Mr. Parker? Okay, all right.
We'll just add that to the agenda. Budget, or approval of the 2021, 22 fiscal year budget. And glad that's an agenda item.
Okay. And that, that will give us two weeks to, you know, the citizens that spoke this morning, I mean, they had every right to be here. And they're certainly entitled to their opinions, just like we are. And we appreciate them coming with their comments. So that'll give us a couple of weeks to, to dwell on some more.
Now, we'll, we'll go to new business. And this is what we did walk on, the funding agreement for Fremont Elementary. And again, this has been worked on by both staffs from the school system and also your staff as well. Appreciate all the work, Allison and Andrew and Borden. And Chip has helped us with as well. But we present this for your consideration. Again, it talks about the DPI needs-based lottery. It talks about our match. It talks about us working with the school system on the design, if there's any cost overrun over the $20 million. And also make sure that the property is debited back to the county. So we can get the sales tax from that. That'll set us about 7% on the cost of construction. But it talks about the DPI grant. It talks about the wealth of revenue. It talks about the using of the 1.3 million in capital fund balance over the next three years. If there's anything specific on here you would like to talk about, we'd be glad to clarify or change.
I just got a question on number two, bullet point number four. Representatives from the Board of Education and Board of Commissioners will consider applications for the concussion manager at risk. Correct me if I'm wrong, but hasn't the school board already got the list of contractors they're looking at?
They have, but there's not a decision being made that I'm aware of.
Did they run that list by the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But technically, you've already violated this agreement.
The decision hasn't been.
Right.
Y'all have been telling them all along that you wanted input onto that.
If they made a decision without, without our input, where does that put us?
Then that, of course, this has to be an agreement. They have to agree to this as well as you, if, if that is y'all's decision.
And the thought process from staff is if you do agree with this today, we will get this to them this afternoon. And because it would have to be concurrent.
And they meet next Monday. And so, and I understand that some of their board members is at a place right now. If we get this to them today, they've got basically six days to take it. And I would sort of think Dr. Lewis would go ahead and get it to them. And I think our communications has got to get better.
Hey, Mr. Honeycutt, would this go before their full board or just their facilities committee?
I'm guessing their full board. If I'm.
Could you find that, please? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Mr.? Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the funding agreement at the, at the Board of, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. It's going to be forwarding over to the school board.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Anyone else? I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, show a sign of the right hand. For? Get it to them, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I look forward to hearing back from them.
Next is public comments.
Back to my right page. Okay, our public comments is now open. Each individual is allowed. Three minutes, four minutes? Three minutes. Public comment time begins. Anyone in the audience have any comments they'd like to make in public comments? One, okay.
Yes, sir, that would be Dennis Lewis.
Chairman, I believe we're supposed to have video today.
I understand that's what you, we do. We've worked out with the county manager. And I have three individuals that have signed up for public comment. And I opened that up for public comment. Mr. Lewis, I think you are first to sign up and speak to us.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I represent Hail Artificious Fireworks. We have been asked to revise fireworks for a wedding on June 25th of this year. And I can't hear.
The packet that I have here is the permit application, a site plan, a certificate of insurance that ensures Wayne County has additional. Also has our materials list and a copy of our federal license. Being required by the state to get your permission, that's what I'm here for.
Mr. Chairman, my issue with this is you're not going to be able to hear what you need to hear because my three minutes is going to be up. Now, I asked for a video three times. I gave the time to start the video and the time to stop it, and we don't have it. Now, somebody's trying to hide something.
Mr. Lewis, I can assure you, we're not trying to hide anything.
Then why don't we have the video after three times, Mr. Chairman? You even presented it once. Who should question your authority? You represent 110,000 plus citizens of Wayne County. When you gave the video times to her, it should have been available, made available May 1st, just like you said. How did she circumvent disrespect, subvert, and undermine your authority? She did that to 110,000 people.
She didn't, no.
Then why isn't it here?
She didn't make the, she didn't make that decision.
Why is it not here?
We're having, we're having the, if Mr. Lewis thinks this is a conspiracy against him, I assure you that this is not a conspiracy. We have the video.
But we don't have it today when I'm here for the third time.
When did she send it to the iPad?
April, May, June. Y'all got a time clock I can punch because I seem to be working for y'all.
The actual audio is working, and that's the only thing that you need. There's no.
I asked for video.
Sir, for some reason, the video's not showing, but clearly I have your video loaded. Now, there's.
Okay, can you move it to the time without going into my three minutes?
That is up to the chairman, sir. I'm speaking about the video.
I don't, I mean, I personally don't mind giving him his three minutes after the video is over with. If anybody else have a problem with it, I don't know.
Let's, let's roll with it. Yeah, yeah. See if you can find that video. I mean, is it, is it not?
You can pull up YouTube. Can you pull up YouTube and put it on the screen? That's how I had to find it.
Can we play the video with the, the sound? Because that's what's most important, it's not pictures, it's the sound.
It's boring. Can I email where you're sending to the commissioners? Because I know we had received a copy. Maybe you can find it there.
That's what I was looking for, but I couldn't find it.
Yeah, you did good, I, Chris.
I was going to email it to you, but you don't have email addresses on the website.
Did ours? Ours is there, it's on. Up on our names, up on our name, it should have our, mine is.
I didn't see it. I didn't see it. Of course, I got bad eyesight, too, so...
I know we're kind of bending the rules right now, but I want to put this to rest. If we have to...
Where's the flash drive?
Where was it put out?
I gave you a flash drive for the second time. All you got to do is plug the flash drive in, and it should come on the screen. Where's the flash drive?
I do not know.
Isn't that somewhat relevant that I give you a flash drive two different times, and the day is not here? Do y'all think I'm being unreasonable?
I'm trying to find it. Here we go.
511, Carol.
Yeah. Find the same. It's in a Dropbox. It's a 11519 and a 61716.
My apologies, I'm in communication with our public information officer and everything at the same time, and I've been told that they're trying to get someone from IT, so you will bear with me. Please, sir.
Is there any way we can go from one of our iPads to the screen?
No, sir. No way that I know.
I got you. Hold on a minute. Where's the man?
Here's the man. We're trying to pull a YouTube video up, is that...
How about this video I see, this Lewis?
Chris, we can pull it up on our iPad, but we can't get it on that screen.
Yes, sir, both of those that say Lewis, meeting comments from 6716 and 11519.
So both of these, these are the ones you're trying to play?
Yes, sir, both of those. And when I pull it up, it's, we can get the audio, but...
Yeah, let's get it. Because evidently, we got to have it.
You got to sign up for that, Mr. Lewis. Wish list.
No way, no.
Hey, you know what? We sign that, Ryan, I have a heart attack.
Hey, I think I got my call.
Well, it didn't install.
It did install it, didn't it?
It was prompting me to log in, and I didn't have that account, so let's go back and try this again.
Oh, look at here, look at here.
All right, so let me make sure the other one's going to work.
That's kind of having somebody knows what they're doing.
That was just installing the component, that's no big deal.
I didn't have a clue. I have clues when it comes to that, for sure.
Now, where was the other file? Was it on the USB drive you've stuck in the system?
Yes.
Okay.
Seven, six, no, six, seven. I apologize.
I don't see it listed here.
Go into current briefings.
Current, okay.
And I have three individuals that have signed up for public comment.
So both of those are working now, so you can come over and play whichever one you want to play first, and then you can just...
I would go back and play the year 2016 first.
Okay.
And I have three individuals that have...
You can just click here to pause and click again to play.
Can you increase the volume?
I don't, let's see if the volume here is set at 100%.
Signed up for public...
So I'll let you just click a little bit.
Well, it was... For comment. And I opened that up for public comment. Mr. Lewis, I think you are first to sign up and speak to us.
Thank you, I'm sorry for having to bother you. I represent Hail Artificious Fireworks. We have been asked to provide fireworks for a wedding on June 25th of this year. The packet that I have here is the permit application, a site plan, a certificate of insurance that ensures Wayne County has additional. Also has our materials list and a copy of our federal license. Being required by the state to get your permission, that's what I'm here for.
Okay, and that was for June 25th.
Yes, sir.
Do we normally have a process to go through on this?
What I would recommend, in the interest of time, is you might approve it subject to our fire marshal's review and concurrence in it. And that way, if Brian's okay with it, we'll go forward with it. If he's not, then we'll bring it back to you on the 21st.
The fire marshal has seen it and has approved.
We don't have any word from him. We'll need to check and see. This is the first we've heard of it.
I understand.
You want to motion the table and vote it next meeting?
Well, I wouldn't table it to the next meeting. What I would suggest is, why don't you just hold it for a minute and handle it later in the meeting and give us time to call Brian and see if he's okay with it. Because if he's okay with it, we're all right.
Okay, if you contact him then. Thank you so much. That is this application, do we need to vote on this in regards to approval of the fireworks application?
We're looking at the commissioner's comments at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we got, Mr. Wade, I have number eight, too.
Yeah, okay, we'll come back to that. Can I get a motion on approval?
I do have a comment on that. I talked with Brian Taylor, and he said the gentleman did come by this morning before our meeting and talked with him about it, and that Brian said it looked everywhere.
Who is this guy?
Well, I think all of us are concerned in regards to the process that's being used by Mr. Lewis, and we would ask that you reach out to him and remind him of proper protocol and procedures.
His first step should have been with the fire marshal's office and then let them...
And he could do that a few days ahead of time, approval of such.
Well, there is a process, and I think, I'd ask you to include in the motion that this is the last time that we're going to waive the formalities of the process for it.
Okay. I'll put it in form of a motion. He moved to chairman.
You put that in form of a motion? All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is any discussion on the motion? Not, all those in favor signify by raising the right hand. Okay, we're approved of this one, and with condition. Okay, our next item.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
November 2018, in a written request for public records, I requested the following. Protocol, protocols, informalities of protocol, which Commissioner Dougherty, serving as chairman, said that were in place. I asked for a copy of those, and I asked for the identity of the assistant county manager. The response I got could have been done no sooner than July 17, 2019. This is the response I got. Copy of protocols and formality of protocols as mentioned in regular meeting held by the county commissioner on June 7, 2016. I do not have this, as there is no mention of protocols in the minutes. Now, the other video, is that available?
Just right there in front of you. She said click on it.
Chris, I'm... Thank you.
Which is it? Right here?
Yes. 19. Dennis Lewis, 786 Perkins Road, Pikeville, North Carolina, 919-580-7417. They say the beginning is a good place to start. Comments were made about me at the December meeting that I feel must be addressed. One commissioner stated that communication is key, and further stated that Mr. Lewis truly feels that he has been discriminated against. First of all, I'm so far from a mistress pathetic. Second, I've never said that I've been discriminated against. I've stated that I believe the rule was unfairly applied, and on more than one occasion. If that is the same as discrimination, so be it. The same commissioner asked if someone can reach out to me, and I believe him to be sincere. But he made the same comment, June 7, 2016, and like then, no one has reached out to me. Another commissioner states that I have never spoken to him. This comment is absurd. The evidence I present will prove that I have spoken to him on more than one occasion. When I stand before you at this podium, I speak collectively as a group and individually as commissioners. This dumb son of a lieutenant former believes if I spoke to you in person, I shouldn't have to call you. This commissioner froze states that he doesn't mind going to my house, sitting down and talking with me, and asks to be kept in the loop as to progress after someone being asked to reach out to me. No one has. The clerk for the board states that we gave him Miss Fermia. I do not know how we are hurting his business. The laws of chivalry and decency forbid me to argue with a woman, but those same laws require me to argue for others. Evidence that I present will show that this administration's actions, or inaction more appropriate, have harmed the hungry child as well as the struggling single parent. The sick as well as the healthy, the young as well as the old. Another commissioner states that I have been late with my requests on numerous occasions. He asked the board chairman if that is correct, to which the chairman replied, yes. This will be hard for me to refute, because it involves opinion, and opinions are neither right nor wrong, they're simply opinions. Members of this board are entitled to theirs, as I am mine. The evidence I present will show that the board or its agents have been confused on more than one occasion. This policy is vague. High courts have ruled that some laws are unconstitutional for the same reason. Examples I can give are the recent bans on immigration, redistricting, and the recent amendments to our state constitution, to name a few. When I appear before you on the 5th of next month, I will be using videos of commissioners' meeting on June 7, 2016. The part I use will begin at 2 hours, 3 minutes, and 15 seconds in the YouTube video. I will also use a phone conversation with an agent for the county that took place on June 15, 2016, as well as a conversation with a county agent that took place on June 25, 2016. I give you this information so that you will not be blindsided. See you on the 5th. Mr. Chairman, I said in this video, I never intend to blindside you. Everything I've done has been well in advance. Whether you got that information or not, I cannot say. My belief is, you were not. And so, let's see if this theory holds water. In an email request sent on May 8, I requested that each commissioner receive a copy of my original request for public records, as well as a registered, a certified letter that I sent to the clerk on July 17. I also asked that you receive a copy of the fireworks policy and the letter that the attorney sent me in regards to my last public record request. Do you have that in front of you?
None of that we don't.
He should be able to tell you that written next to that is the word no, that I don't believe you have it. But my issue, my request for public records in 2018, I told her exactly where to find it, minute, second, date, and her response, can't find it. She couldn't tell me the name of an employee. Just a few moments ago, I asked to speak during public comments. I asked respectfully, and you responded by asking the attorney, can he speak? You said no. You looked at me, and you said, we have rules we have to follow. You may not believe it, but the state says, state law, section 168, I believe, deals with public records. The name of any public employee, county employee, municipal, state, county, city, is public record. She couldn't find it? This is the most insulting thing I have ever been delivered. I'm not offended. I can get over being offended. Being insulted takes a little longer for me. Everything on here is a complete lie. And Mr. Chairman, January 25, 2019, you made this comment to me. If it's a public record, you're just as entitled to it as anybody else. Is the name of the former assistant county manager public record?
Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal?
Well, he's been identified, so the fact that...
It was not in any former email. The only employee that was asked about in a former email, Mr. Chairman, was an IT employee.
I sent her a letter, hand-delivered a letter, Kristy Fedora Parker, on November 8, 2018. The county manager mentions my request at the December 4, 2019 meeting. Now, as you can tell, I don't have any notes in front of me. I have her response. I don't have any notes. I'm throwing dates out for you. Check them.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, she started your time after we got through looking at the videos, and your three minutes is up. And normally, we don't make comments after public comments, but I'm going to break the rules today. I really don't know what your point is. My question is to you, the last few times that you've performed your fireworks in the county, have you had any problem getting things done?
No, sir. And let me say this, on more than one occasion, when I've been standing at this podium, I have said I never had a problem. My issue here is my request for public records. Now, I don't like the fact that you didn't charge my competitors for a permit fee. I don't like that at all. And I mentioned that. My objection is in the enforcement equally. And I said this at the November 4, 2018 meeting.
Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal, can y'all, Mr. Lewis says that we don't charge his competitors for permits. I don't understand him.
Where was that? What date was that, Dennis? That they didn't charge the, or what year was it?
Now, Mr. Chairman, we've had this conversation, January 25, 2019, in the county manager's office. I told you who was shooting illegal fireworks at, and y'all said y'all were going to handle it. He said he was going to keep me informed. I haven't heard a word from him.
There were illegal fireworks that were being shot that were not permitted, so therefore...
So therefore, they were not charged a permit fee because they were illegally and shot, and it was after the fact.
Now, but...
We weren't gonna go hunt them down.
But they were doing it illegal?
They were doing it illegal, did not have a permit, so therefore, they did not give us a permit fee. So technically, Mr. Lewis is correct. They were not charged a permit fee.
But, Mr. Chairman, on January twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, I told you, county manager, assistant county manager was there, Ray Mayo was there, I was there, and another person was there. Now, the six of us heard that Busco Beach was performing fireworks. It's all over their Facebook page. If you pull it up today and go back, you'll see where they say massive fireworks show, July third, two thousand twenty-one. Do you have their paperwork on file?
Mr. Chair.
You didn't have it last year.
I think, Mr. Wade? Yes, I think we're kinda going all over the place, um, Mr. Lewis. I'll speak up. I'll speak up so you can hear me. Mr. Lewis, um, so you, you really just want your public records request? Is that correct?
Well, I'd like for you to start making sure that everybody pays for a permit fee. Now, I understand that this little thing y'all did earlier, you said that Goldsboro was gonna start. Did you change your county policy? If you didn't change your county policy, what you just did won't mean a thing.
Yes, it will. It's a resolution transferring the authority to the city of Goldsboro. So they will be responsible for fireworks permitting within the city limits or the ETJ of the town of Goldsboro.
But your county policy says any person shooting fireworks in Wayne County must submit the following paperwork.
This will supersede that. This will be, the town of Goldsboro, or city of Goldsboro will be responsible for that. So if you have any additional firework permits that you need, you will need to go to the city of Goldsboro.
So what we did, what we did today, number three in consent agenda, that takes care of Dennis's...
That takes care of the Pikeville event.
Right.
Right.
So...
He's good.
You're good, okay.
Okay.
Now, are you saying Goldsboro doesn't have to submit their paperwork to the county?
Yes, sir. That's what we're saying.
Yes, sir.
Then is Busco Beach, where they're shooting the fireworks? Y'all won't know because no one's ever seen it. Is that in the county or the city?
That's a cheap question.
That is in the county now because, uh, it has been, uh, they took the ETJ off of Busco Beach, and that is now in the county.
So...
They should, they should be submitting a request for permitting. Uh, again, should be in doing or sometimes two different things.
If they, if they, if they have a... And you current, Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal, you can straight me out if I'm wrong. If they have a fireworks display and they do not have a permit, can the sheriff carry out his duties in? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Sheriff, but I mean, you know, if they do not have a permit, they're in violation, correct? And I know you got your hands full out there without worrying about fireworks, but... But if they're advertising, as Dennis said, they're advertising a large fireworks...
Forty minutes.
Where's it advertised? Is it on their Facebook page or something?
It's on their Facebook page. Now, their last show lasted forty minutes. Last year, because of the pandemic, I shoot a hundred and forty shows a year. My company. Last year, we shot twenty-nine. Ms. Hardeston, I believe you represent the Prince Scenario, I mean, Rosewood Prince Scenario?
Yes, sir.
I had to obtain a permit to shoot a fireworks show at the bridge church. They have to reimburse me that fee. Okay? They have a church in Northern Indy County, puts a banner up at the end of, uh, Hennessy Road, where the recycle center is. They put one, they put a banner up at each end inviting people to go see their fireworks. It ain't about money for me. If you want to pass a ordinance that I'm the only person who has to pay for a permit fee, it won't bother me one bit. But let me tell you this, what bothers me? Somebody goes to the emergency room, and they're hurt, they were burned by fireworks. About every three years, the insurance industry is gonna do a survey, and they're gonna look at the people injured by fireworks. When the incident happened at Ocracoke, had nothing to do with me. My insurance jumped sixteen thousand dollars. So some guy been drinking at Busco Beach, and everybody thinks it's funny that he's trying to light fireworks. It's funny until one goes through his shoulder and rips his heart out with it. Because the fireworks comes out of the mortar at three hundred mile an hour. Three hundred mile an hour. Baseball players duck when a ball is coming out about a hundred feet, a hundred mile an hour. They duck because they don't wanna get hit with it. Now, three hundred mile an hour?
Excuse me, sir. Not trying to be rude, but we, we, you've exceeded your time. And I'm trying to get to the point, what do you want from this board? You came here because you, you showed us a video. You talked about public records. That is something, if, if you are required, you still didn't receive your public records, then I'm asking that you do get your public records and, because you should get that.
I should have gotten it when that could wait.
But if there's anything else, then we, we, you've exceeded your time. So do you want the public records?
I want my public records. I want to defend myself from every condescending, disparaging comment being made about me by any...
So we, so, so if it's okay with the board, we, we need to make sure he gets his public records request?
He did.
He got it.
The last response even came from our attorney, sir.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, we have other business we have to handle.
If you had received the letter from the county manager, you don't have a copy of it. If you look at my email and send it to him, I'll pay the bill.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead and move on.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, well, I think we've given you ample time. But there's one, but there's one thing. I do not appreciate you coming up here and accusing Iowa clerk of not doing her job and calling her a liar. She does the best that she can. She gets the information. And out of respect for her and her position, I do not appreciate you coming up here and accusing her of a liar. And if you come back before us again, I would certainly appreciate it that if you, that you would treat her with respect. We're through.
Yes, she'll treat me with respect. Three years.
Nick, just turn it up.
Instead of sure putting up with the fire marshal.
Well, that, I mean, well, we can talk to Larry and the fire marshal. I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm, and I'm not, I won't try to put you in a spot, but, you know, if they are shooting illegal, I mean...
Well, that, yeah, I mean, I already give out some of that stuff. I'll bring it up. The fire marshal and all some others, more resources that work out in that area.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I think what Dennis was, was, was getting to is if, if fireworks are, are shot illegally and somebody gets hurt, and as he says, the insurance thing comes around, it's gonna directly affect his insurance like the Ocracoke thing did. And I can understand that part of it, but...
But, but there's a lot of times, like the, the instance he brought up with the church, we had no idea.
I understand, I understand.
I mean, and, and get good individuals...
And we're not having policing in the area either.
Individuals don't have to have a permit, do they?
There's not these events that they're not, that he's talking about. I can guarantee you they're not lasting fireworks displays. People that's gone down to South Carolina, popped the fireworks and then brought it down and then shoot it off. Solid is.
And no word does it say that an individual has to have a permit, does it? I know there, there's a general statute, we're not supposed to have fireworks in North Carolina to that caliber. But if you can go right, hell, I'm guilty. Excuse my French. I mean, I've done it. And don't you do me like Ricky Hooks and come write me a ticket for it now.
You'll wait for Mr. Curly? I, I have no managers' comments, uh, uh, next, but I, I did wanna publicly thank Allison and Janice and Chip and the whole, uh, budget team and what you presented. It looks like it's been about two weeks work for work. We've really been about six months work for work, working with department heads, working with revenue projections, working with expenditure projections, working with Davenport, uh, working with our facilities committee. So there's been a lot of work in the past six months that took us to get to this point. And I do wanna say as well, a tax increase is never fun. In my twenty-eight budget years, I probably have done five tax increases, and they're not fun. However, we are specifically making sure that, that the funds that will be raised with this tax increase will specifically go to the debt service of any new projects that the board of commissioners so choose. I do wanna, you know, reiterate that it is not for operations. It is not for cost of living. It is not for insurance. It's not for anything else, uh, dealing with county government as far as operations. It is solely due to additional debt service for the fifty-eight million dollars. So with that being said, uh, again, thank you all for your input as well. I think we had a, you really set the framework at our meeting in January at the Maxwell Center when we sat down and looked at goals. Uh, at that time, we talked about paying class. At that time, we talked about facilities. We talked about a lot of different projects. Uh, we talked about funding as well. So, uh, I do wanna thank you for your guidelines and, and your, your suggestions and, and your leadership as well on this budget. So I do wanna thank you.
Mr. Chair? And also, to, to chime in on that budget, I actually, when I was coming in today, I met one of the employees from facilities, and they were so thankful of the increase they're gonna be having in their salary based on, on the work that this board has done. So, I mean, that, that makes you feel good when you see an employee and they're like, thank you, you know? And, uh, so I think that, you know, overall, that was a good decision.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Turn my page. County manager's report's good. Board of Commissioners, uh, committee reports. Commissioner Barbara A. Cott.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to thank Matt Olive, Glenn Holland, Jamie Royal, and some of the board meeting members that were there Thursday when we, uh, visited our facility. It's a larger facility than I anticipated, and I think the members that went with us learned a whole lot that day. Also, I worked in sewer for a long time, and I've seen the headaches that goes with it, and I've seen the problems that goes with it. So like I said, it, it, it's going, if we don't get the problem resolved, we're gonna lose a lot of businesses coming into Wayne County. And I think in the last few weeks, with Goldsboro having their leak this week or spill, it, it's, it's beginning to escalate. Mount Olive's beginning to escalate. Pipeville's beginning to escalate. Fremont's escalating, Eureka. When the LGC begins to take over small towns because of the escalation of sewer, it's, it's a big problem. Also, I would like to thank, uh, Andy Evans' family for sending me the information to get the bridge renamed after Mr. Evans. My time in Fremont, Mr. Evans was a big part of helping me get a lot of things done, uh, in Fremont. I'd like to share one incident that occurred. Uh, we had some ditches that were backed up. We were having a hurricane coming, and I did not have the equipment to get the water to where it would not flood some homes. Mr. Evans took his equipment and started digging ditches in Fremont to turn the water out of Fremont. That was the kind of person he was. Also, we had, during the hurricane, we had one home that flooded continuously every time we had a hurricane. Well, I went out with my staff. We investigated, and there was a tile on some of his property that was completely stopped up. I called, uh, Mr. Evans. He said, dig her up. So we took the backhoe, and we dug the tile up off of his property to where the water flow would not flood this gentleman's house. That's the kind of person that he was for Fremont. And I, I cannot tell you how much I valued his friendship when I was there. And I would just like to thank his family again for allowing me to present a resolution to this board. And they will present that resolution to the Fremont Board also. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Dory?
Mr. Chairman, I want to bring to everybody's attention, I hope you all saw the article that was, um, in the newspaper. Brandon Gray, the executive director of the Wayne County Jetport, was recently honored as the region's manager of the year. You know, I know Brandon, I serve on that, uh, commission, and I really didn't realize just how big of an honor this was until I read this newspaper article. Now, you'd think I would know, but I, I did not realize it. The FAA's Southern Region comprises of all of Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Kentucky, Mississippi, North Carolina, Tennessee, South Carolina, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands. So that was the area in which they decided the best of the best was right here at Wayne County. And that's just really a great honor. And I hope that we will honor him, uh, in, in future meetings. Over the past seven years, Wayne County Jetport, this is remarkable, under his leadership, has received more than ten million dollars in funding for improvements to support the future growth and development of our jet port. We all have seen the remarkable growth and, and improvements out there at the jet port. But it's, it's just remarkable that over the last seven years, we've gotten over ten million dollars. So I, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, uh, that there are good things happening here in Wayne County. In regards to the budget, I have held off on my comments on the budget. It's always difficult to sit there and make those tough decisions in regards to raising taxes. And it's, it, it's a hardship on our tax-paying citizens whenever taxes have to be increased. That said, I really am taken back that we would delay any action on this budget. And here's why. One time is money. With us thinking of going out and hiring architects and, uh, hiring individuals and getting bids, we're going to be in a real battle of competition in the very near future. Counties are determining the usage of their COVID relief funds. Counties are deciding as well, there are a hundred counties in North Carolina, and they're all deciding on their budgets at this particular time. And we're all gonna be competing with a small group of individuals that can deliver these projects. So I'm a little bit, uh, concerned that we're going to bite the bullet and we're going to ask our taxpayers to dig a little deeper for these much-needed improvements in our county. But at the same time, we're putting off that decision. And I'm hoping that it will not cost us, uh, as we go out to bids. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Foster?
I, I always go to, uh, definition of insanity by Albert Einstein. And it says, to continue to do the same old thing expecting a different result is insanity. At this point, we can't continue to do the same thing. That's just regardless. We're, we're, some people are not gonna like it. But it's a tough decision that we have to make. Because if we continue to do the same old thing, we're gonna get the same result. And that has happened over the years. And, and I'm not to, not trying to knock any passports around the city, county, anywhere, school... board or anything. But we have to start moving this county forward. That's just a fact. We're behind in a lot of areas. We don't want to admit it. We don't want to be honest with ourselves, but we are. We're all responsible, every elected official. Our senator, our House of Representatives, county, school board, city, we're all responsible. And, you know, we have to do something different in order to move this county forward. I'm watching surrounding counties move and get things and things happen. I'm ready to see that for Wayne County. I love this place. Love it. And I don't want to see taxes go up and it hurts elderly or anything. But at the same time, you know, my mother just retired. And I know I'm probably get some slack from her because she has a budget sliced to the dime, you know? And it's gonna be like, "Well, Ma, you know, you just got to put in a couple extra dollars." Because it's for the benefit of everybody, you know? And the future that's coming as well. We have to make sure we have a health department and stuff that's gonna, you know, serve our youth, all the people hopefully coming to Wayne County. I mean, you know, and hopefully some of that money comes back that we can do other things with. But I mean, you know, we just have to do something. And I think the time is now, not later. Thank you.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes, thank you, sir. Had the opportunity with the working group to go to Mount Olive and we viewed the sewage plan. We saw some of the needs that needed to be addressed there. There's a lot of needs. And we discussed how, at this point, Mount Olive can't grow unless we come up with a strategic plan that's going to help them. It can't grow on an industrial level. It can't grow on citizens moving here. Actually, they're moving away. So we have to do something. It's a dire need. For decades, there's been neglect. And not just Mount Olive, but in all our surrounding counties. So we have to do something in regard to the sewage. So this working group, Commissioner Acock, Commissioner Hardison, they have been strong in regards to trying to see what we could do to resolve these issues. And I really appreciate it. And I appreciate working with them. Also, had the opportunity to meet with the Mount Olive Planning Board. Me and Commissioner Hardison, we went there Thursday evening and we saw they have a lot of needs that need to be addressed and they're working as well. Really just want to start focusing on our future. As Commissioner Foster stated, we got to think about our future. It may cost us, but we're going to be rewarded in the long run. Because we're going to have a, if we can fix the sewage, we can have more of a tax base here. At this point, we won't have a tax base in Mount Olive. So thank you and I appreciate this working group and this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gurley.
I've always, I've always tried to think long-term, trying to plan for the future. I've had several, say I do a whole lot of what-if-ing. What if this happened? What if that happens? Well, I try to have a plan if that happens. It's not always going to happen the same way every time, but you try to have a plan. I've said on more than one occasion, I don't like taxes. To Commissioner Komarthy's comments earlier about it's going to cost some of us more, it's going to cost me more than that $130 to, for the tax, as far as what we're talking about taxes a while ago. I've been blessed in business and to acquire things. But there again, it's going to cost me more. Do I like it? No. But if I get in a wreck, I want the best of the best coming to get me. If my family's in a wreck, I want the best of the best. If I have somebody break in our house, I want the best of the best of law enforcement And I want them to come there quick. But all that being said, you know, a lot of people look at it and says, "What do we need a health department for?" Well, this past year tells you what we need a health department for. With the pandemic between the Health Department and our EMS department and our OES department, we had a flawless system with the vaccination administering. But all that takes money. It just, it's just, if we could run things without it, it would be a good thing. But the bottom line is, it takes money to provide services and Wayne County is in the service business. As far as the tax rate, I don't know which one's the best. I mean, we've talked about several needs, but just comments on the board that is needed. I mean, bottom line, you can't tax enough to pay for it. It's going to take some help from somewhere. Passed some discussions with certain ones in elected positions to try to see what kind of positions we, or what kind of money we've got coming. But we just had to see, you know? The problem is, is all so many strings attached to the money. It sounds like a $80 million, sounds like a lot of money. But when it's restricted, you can't spend it in three or four different ways, you know, your hands are tied. So you really don't have access to that $80 million when it's all said and done. As far as the construction, we need all of the above. But I'm in the construction industry. And now is the absolute worst time to be building anything because of the material costs are as high as they've ever been. And I've been in this for 37 years, 34 years, excuse me. And it's as high as I've ever seen it. When a piece of plywood costs you $96, it is not the best time to be building. So I just asked the board to kind of think, when we start talking about construction, do we really need to look at getting prices today? We could do the groundwork. Groundwork's got to be done regardless. But when it comes to getting pricing, we may want to think about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardison.
We're talking about taxes and back in January, I'm the bad guy. I proposed raising the taxes about 4 cents. And the reason I did so was because the county's been very good with holding taxes low over the last several years. But by doing so, it put us in a bad bind. We didn't bill when we needed to bill or paid for funds out of the general plan. You only hit your well so many times before the water runs dry. So I take full responsibility for that and I think it's the right decision. And I came into office telling folks that we needed a tax increase, plain and simple. That was the issue for the matter. And going to the sewers, I'd like to thank Mr. Williams and Ms. Acock here because they're on the working committee with myself. And that's going to be a major issue. It's a major issue now, but the citizens aren't talking about it because it's sewer, out of sight, out of mind. But we need to do something. We need to do it quickly. And the towns just don't have the money and in some cases, the expertise to solve the problem. So we need to find a way of working that out. Other than that, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Most of what needs to be said has already been said.
He just started going first.
He just gave me three minutes.
No, I'm gonna give you all done.
But anyhow, taxes has been mentioned. I send our tax department a sizable check every year. But on the other hand, I'm very blessed, very fortunate to have what I've got. And no, I don't like tax increases. But look back at the last two or three boards that has set in this position. You know, we can sit here and say what they did wrong or what they did right. But I can speak for the last Board of Commissioners. A lot of money was spent in Wayne County. There were new schools built. There was new library built, new veteran cemetery that, I mean, everybody just, I mean, it's amazing what goes on out there. The Maxwell Center. And I mentioned schools. A lot of that was done without borrowing money. Well, we've dipped out that bucket about as long as we can without putting some back. A lot of the needs have been met, but all of the needs have not been met. And what we're talking about, and we just used a $58 million figure. I certainly confidently won't come in under that. I don't know what the figure will be if it comes in over. But some of those, the biggest part of those needs are really going to be spent on the people that need the needs. Our Health Department and our DSS, their primary job is to look after all of us, but especially the underprivileged. So a lot of the money that we're looking at spending now is going to be helping people. And like Commissioner Gurley said, if we, you know, our Health Department, if we hadn't them and our, like the EMS and the OES and private citizens that come in step up to the plate, if we, we've got the structure there. We've got the people in place. But the ones that is really being shorted is the customers that they see every day. No, I don't want to see a tax increase, but I've said and everyone else has said, there's more needs than New Year's funds. And far as the Health Department and DSS, I'm going on nine years on this board. And we kicked that can down the road for nine years. I mean, the problem was there when we come on board, the previous board. And we kicked it down the road and kicked it. And we've kicked it about as far as we can kick it. And that's all I have. Anyone else? Excuse me. Do I have a motion that we go back into closed session? Is that what?
They for the same thing she went in before.
Okay. I have a motion we go back into closed session. All in favor, show a sign of right hand. We are back in session out of closed session. Is there any other business items that need to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dory.
I was waiting for somebody else to make this motion, but let me go ahead and make it. I move that we accept the amended budget as presented, which would include a 4.4 cent property tax increase for the year of 2021, 2022.
I have a motion on the floor. If no discussion, all in favor, show a sign of right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone else have any business to conduct today before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I have another motion in that the budget has been passed and I have expressed my concerns about the competition in going forward and the cost of these projects. And in the interest of trying to hold down on cost, I move that the county issue a request for qualifications for architectural and construction manager at risk to design and oversee the construction of a combined DSS and Health Department facility, the location of which shall be determined by the Board of Commissioners following consultation with the hired architect and construction manager at risk.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I got some discussion on that. I mean, I think we need to be careful on our going to bid at this point in time with the construction costs as high as they are. And the reason I say that is, like I said earlier, I think we could do some preliminary work based on our side work, but I don't think the, I don't think it's prudent to go full force and get any prices when there are materials at all-time high. That's just my opinion. That's the same to say that we also have another project on the table, being the jail that we would need to get. I think we need to get prices based on both projects to see which one, how we proceed. That's my opinion on the thing.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could reply to that.
Yes, sir.
I totally agree. But we're not getting pricing. And if I could get the county manager to assist me on this, if we start now with a RFQ on the architect and maybe somebody can give me an idea, I would say we're looking at a minimum of two months. You got to get the RFQ together. You got to put it out there. You got to get it back. Then this board is going to have to interview these architects. You're looking at a minimum of two months before you can even make the decision of who the architect is.
But you have to make a decision. And then on the last architect, we had it took 30 days for the contract to get done. So.
Then after that, they start work on a preliminary plan.
Right.
After they get a preliminary plan, which means consultations with us, with the Health Department, with DSS, they get a schematic sketch. We're looking at probably December before you would even have that. The next, once that's agreed to, the next phase is they go to full schematic drawing. You cannot go to bids until you have full schematic drawing. So you're looking at, at easy, the spring of next year before you would even have those drawings. Now, that could be condensed somewhat, but it is months away before you can even go to bids. And so I want to be prepared that we start the process so that we're prepared in order to go to bids when the market is stable.
Well, I agree with that part. I'm not in agreeance of getting firm pricing based on today's material.
We're not getting firm pricing.
That being said, what is our schedule for the jail since we've passed our budget based on the two projects combined?
I'm not sure when the, you know, Mosley right now is looking at the cost of renovation.
So you're telling me that none of that stuff is back yet?
No, sir, it's not back yet.
Not back yet? So have you called them lately?
Been working, I haven't called them lately. I will call them as soon as this meeting is over.
Okay, so we've got that in, we've got that in process, but we're not looking at doing that. But we do not have to help DSS even any drawings for our facility and we're moving forward. Just asking a question.
What I would say with the Mosley is, once we get that final report back from them on cost of renovation, is that needs to be presented to the Facilities Committee and then Facilities Committee to review that and make sure and look at all options.
Yeah, but you see where I'm coming from? It sounds like we might be lagging on some. I'm just saying. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I restate my motion? Because it is a lengthy one and I've asked, I actually asked for assistance to make sure that we were covered on all aspects of that. I move that the county issue a request for qualifications for architectural and construction manager at risk services to design and oversee construction of a combined DSS and Health Department facility, the location of which shall be determined by the Board of the location of which shall be determined by the board of commissioners following consultation with the hired architect and construction manager at risk. Start the process.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, we should have signed it right hand. Forward. Against. Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, one last thing. And that is, on the jail, it's right behind it. It's a matter of getting these studies back to us for us to review, for the board to have all of that, for us to have open discussion on it. Actually, that project will probably move a little bit faster in that they've already got some preliminary sketchings done, correct?
Yes.
So, they're ahead of the game in essence. But we need to study back for us to review that, analyze it, before we go forward with it.
And you're going to find out this afternoon where the study's at.
Yes, sir.
And give us.
Yes, sir.
Email back.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, I'm going to shoot my foot in the foot. We're discussing the jail. And so far, the slant of the conversation, I feel like, is going towards a new facility. I just, and I voted for it. But now, the more I look back, I think the money that we're doing for this study for the old jail is money thrown away. Bingo. I think it's money thrown away. I was going to say that same thing. And I voted for it, but I was wrong. I just think that's money being thrown away.
But that ain't the first one to be thrown away.
And I've been a part of some others that's been thrown away. But I just, I want the general public to know that I think that that's the money that we're spending that we shouldn't have spent. Okay, anybody else got anything? Do I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
I have a motion adjourned. All in favor, we should have signed it right hand.
There you go.